All right, thanks for joining us, everyone. This is the Wednesday, April 25th, meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. I'm going to be the acting chair tonight, Greg Stutzman. Our regular chair, Steve Schreiber, is with us tonight, but I chaired the previous public hearing, and so I'm going to continue in that capacity. The first item on our agenda is minutes, and we have minutes of Wednesday, April 18th, prepared for us by staff. Thank you.
Moved, we approve the minutes?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? All right. All opposed? And all abstaining? Okay, so that's five. It's six, zero, with two abstentions and one absent. Three abstentions and one absent? Okay, thank you. And the next item on our agenda is a public hearing scheduled for 8:15. This is a continuation of SPR 2018-11, and SPP 2018-01, U Drive LLC, University Drive, mixed-use building. So we've already gone through much of our process here. We have some new documents. We have a final development application report from staff. We have a fire protection transmittal, and some assorted other letters related to the project, which were sent to us by staff. Any updates from the applicant at this point?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy, Attorney at law, speaking with Wilson here in Amherst, here on behalf of U Drive LLC. With me this evening, John Kuhn, Kuhn Riddle Architects, architect of the project, and the developer Barry Roberts. Mr. Chair, we do have one update. We have added a little pop of color to the elevations, if you'll see. The last time we were here, it was gray on the bottom, and then this was all like a pale yellow. We have added a touch of burgundy.
That's very nice. Very archaic. Very poetic.
We have added a touch of burgundy. So that is the change, and that's what we would request the approval of. Of course, if the board has comments on the color, I'm sure that John can discuss.
All right, thanks for that. And if I could ask a question of staff, it looks like any changes to the development application report since our last meeting are noted in the bold italics in the document. Is that the case? Okay, thank you. So there were some issues highlighted by staff previously. I believe there's one new issue. So those outstanding issues are that the board may wish to include a condition related to signs. We have the two requests related to special permit for a parking waiver and the height modification. There's an issue recently brought to our attention about including some language related to fill, and that's new language on page seven of the development application report. And I believe the issue related to the fire department has been addressed by the fire department's submittal. So we can proceed with any public comment. Or Chris?
I just wanted to add that there's one more thing that this building will have. We're in ten minutes about the first floor, and so we just need to move it out.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at this time? Are there comments and questions from the board? Steve?
I just wanted to make one comment. So I looked at the draft. First of all, I was not here for the public hearing. I did watch the video, and I sent to Chris the certification that I had watched it, therefore I will be voting tonight as part of the -- because of the Mullen Rule. But there was one part that struck me that I don't see in the conditions here, and that's the part about the office, that the office -- it's in the -- I didn't --
It was revised.
Oh, it's revised. Okay, I didn't see the revised one.
You have the revised one, and then the --
Gotcha. Okay, never mind.
And if I could clarify, we had a couple of members absent last time, so Mr. Schreiber has reviewed the video and stated in writing that he had done so. Maybe we'll do the same? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. As Steve mentioned, we do also have a draft list of possible conditions for the development prepared by staff, which in my view address all the outstanding issues, but we haven't had yet a substantive conversation about, I think, the special permit requests for height and parking, so if there are any board member comments on those issues, I think that would be a good time. Yep, David?
Yes, hi. In the management narrative summary, I was wondering if Mr. Roberts or someone could speak to the -- be more specific about consideration of installation of an electrical vehicle charging station.
Would you mind using the mic, please?
Yep, I'm sorry.
My name is Barry Roberts, 200 Bay Road, Amherst, the developer for this project. We fully intend to install electrical vehicle charging station in the project, probably the area closest to the building, because it'll make it a lot easier for us to wire.
Would that be for two slots or two spaces? Or how many spaces were you -- how many stations were you imagining?
We were imagining one station.
So covering -- so for two possible --
Yeah, plugs.
Yes.
Christine?
I also was nodding the last one and watched the video, but I missed if -- about where the bike racks would be, and if there's any bike storage in the building.
I completely -- there's bike storage in the building. On the east end, let's see if I can -- over here, if you probably see it on that screen and in the screen behind you, we've got the bike racks proposed for -- we've got four proposed, but I think we could -- if we can fit a couple more, we'll fit as many as we can. Certainly.
Ari?
Just a question, since, if I understand well, you kind of own the two adjacent properties. If there's an overflow in the parking, where would the cars go?
An overflow in which?
Like if there would be more than what you have for the housing?
Yeah, so what we are proposing is a parking management system where the studios, the one and the two bedrooms, are only allowed one parking space per unit, and then the three bedrooms are each allowed two parking spaces per unit. Additionally, the office will have one space, so that gets us to 40 spaces. We are proposing 48 total spaces. And we think that through the appropriate management and a sticker system, so you'll be able to identify exactly who the tenants are. And then just monitoring and oversight, we don't anticipate any parking issues there. For this, which is, we've been through the zoning board of appeals process for the restaurant, we do have excess parking across the street at 2535 University Drive through a valet service, so we also don't anticipate any of those vehicles parking in here and, you know, walking along that revised bike path to the restaurant. So it really comes down to management and oversight.
Okay, I -- just a clarification. I didn't imagine that people from the restaurant would need to park. I was imagining that if people in the residential units would need parking, would they be able to use in case of an overflow at night?
No, I mean, I think it'll be well-regulated, and it'll be clear in the lease that here are the number of spaces, or the space, that you get. And, you know, looking up here, one of the things that we were very concerned about was folks parking at this large parking lot next door and then hoofing it over into the apartment complex. And so working with the butter, Ms. Marley, we've agreed to put up a six-foot-high fence, chain-link fence with arborvitae along the entirety of it, and it leads from the wetlands to the wetlands. And I believe you were at the site visit and saw what type of, you know, how dense these wetlands really are and what they've -- they're wet, first of all, and what else they've got in them. So we don't think that this will be a route that anybody would take. And we're putting up security cameras on that fence to make sure that there aren't folks parking here and then walking into the complex. So, you know, it's one of those things that if it becomes a problem, we'll figure out a solution. We have provisions in the lease that is a cause of eviction if you are found parking in an adjacent parcel without their permission. If Ms. Marley wants to allow parking next door to those, and she has some agreements with residents, that's somewhat beyond our control, but that's not the intent at all. We think that properly managed, with the number of units, the breakdown, the unit mix and bedrooms that we have, it can all be accommodated on-site. And I think, you know, Mr. Roberts, from his experience in town, actually finds that there are folks without vehicles, and especially in this location, given its access to the multipurpose path, proximity to restaurants, bars, drinking places, I think, as they just called it in the last meeting, and, you know, the CVS, the healthcare, the big Y. It's not a place where we anticipate having many vehicles. Long-winded answer, I know.
I have a question. I'm thinking I see that a snow removal contractor is named. Is there a plan here that shows designated snow storage areas, or is the intent that snow be removed by the contractor?
That snow be removed, I think there's some limited area in the back here, but the intent is that, you know, push it out of the way in those low-volume, you know, half-an-inch storms, just to clear it, and then truck it offsite.
Thank you. Christine?
Back on the bikes, hoping that there aren't a whole lot of cars and with the bikes. So how many -- you said four. Is that four racks with how many bikes?
I think there's even more, though. I forget exactly how many that our engineer has said. It might be in the specs that we have provided. Is there a number that --
Well, just if it was 16, 20, you know, then you're encouraging your renters to use it, and I was wondering, on the second part, is could they be covered?
Oh, that's interesting.
Just hoping to encourage people to use their bikes and have their bikes.
You mean, open-sided type structure with just a --
Yeah, like what they do at schools and stuff.
There's the guy that would design it right there.
You know, I guess it depends on the type of bike that's out there, and if somebody's going to leave it outside.
So this is an elevator building, and if you've got a, you know, a carbon fiber road bike that costs a couple grand, maybe you're saying, "I'm bringing this up with me," and it's going to be in the room as compared with leaving it outside. But we'll look to maximize onsite bike storage.
Just it's great to enhance that if you're trying to downplay the car, which is great.
Absolutely.
There is a bike rack detail on sheets we've been given, and I don't know quite how to read that. Is that three spaces, or is that four spaces? Or is it seven? Because you go out from both sides. I don't quite get it.
You can go from both sides.
So each of those racks could accommodate seven bikes.
We've got 28. We could eliminate parking altogether.
I get your -- sorry, that if they're expensive, right, some people would keep them, but if you're on the third floor, you know, and you're trying to get in and out, like, people might just lock up their bikes during the day. But just keeping out of inkling of whether --
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the amenity of this site and the location, is having easy access to that bike trail to go east, west, north, south.
Other comments, questions from the board? So we essentially have two items to address here, which are the special permit and the site plan review. Question for staff, were the draft conditions intended to accompany each of those items?
It was really -- the draft conditions were really meant to accompany the site plan review. I wasn't sure if there were any conditions that would be specific to the special permit. Perhaps you can think of some.
Probably just built, if I may, Mr. Chair, probably built in substantially in accordance with the plans as approved by the planning board, and in the breakdown as provided. So I think you covered that with substantially in accordance with the plans, because it's both for the height and it's for the more than 10 residential units above the first floor. So I think with substantially in accordance with the plans we've provided, we're bound to have a certain number of studios, ones, twos, and threes, and then also what we've provided for the elevation show the height, maximum to the peak, to the average, et cetera.
That sounds reasonable to me. So I'd propose that we look at the special permit first, and so we do have Section 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, and on occasion, we have gone through this section by section, and on occasion, we have done blanket motions. So is there anyone that would like us to go through this section by section for the purposes of this application? Okay, so we'll do that then. So we're looking at Section 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, and I'm just going to go through these one by one, and if anyone has comments or notes they'd like to make, just let me know. So the first is 10.38-0, that the proposal is suitably located.
You want to give a few brief reasons why?
So I would suggest that we find the proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood because it has adequate access to transportation and services. Located in an emerging mixed-use zone.
And you supported the zone change a couple of years ago, which otherwise, we wouldn't be able to have this.
So Section 10.38-1, the proposal is compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by right in the same district. I agree that it is. There's other compatible existing uses in the district and in the immediate area. 10.38-2, the proposal would not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, flood noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. I think that the plan as proposed incorporates a number of landscaping features which would encourage -- would prevent it from being a nuisance in these ways, especially the inclusion of the newly forested areas on the site. 10.38-3, the proposal would not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butter's vehicles or pedestrians.
On 10.38-2, is it -- there any reason to suggest or indicate that the applicant has arranged, made an arrangement with the butter about not challenging the -- making the land swap? I don't know whether that should be a part of -- or not a land swap, but a heating of a certain strip.
I'm not sure that would necessarily fall into this section, but I'd be welcome -- I'd welcome an answer on that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I don't think it necessarily would be appropriate. I think what I would look at is the other safeguards that we have in place relative to the location of the rooftop mechanicals in between the two crests of the roof, the essentially clean letter that we got from the town engineer, the peer review by beta relative to stormwater, and the location of the building being away from the butter, and then also the revegetation, as you have suggested. Downcast lighting as well.
Right. And just a reminder that we are on the special permit, so the issues before us are related to what's being requested in the special permit, and not necessarily the application as a whole. Item 10.38-3, the proposal would not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butter's vehicles or pedestrians. I think that the parking as proposed addresses those concerns. 10.38-4, adequate and appropriate facilities provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. Wood. 10.38-5, the proposal reasonably protects the adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses on the site, including air and water pollution, flood noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. For the same reasons I pointed to for 10.38-2, I'd say that's the case. 10.38-6, the proposal ensures that it is conformance with the parking and sign regulations. So we have detailed parking plans, and we have incorporated into our conditions that a sign plan shall be submitted to the planning board for review and approval at a public meeting, and I think that that addresses that section.
As, and if I put a finer point, as waived under Section 7.9. So the regulations say you have to provide this many, but because of the conditions we're requesting and also the lease restrictions, we're reducing the regulated parking.
Absolutely. 10.38-7, the proposal provides convenient safe vehicular acts, vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets, property or improvements, et cetera. We have a -- well, this doesn't relate to offsite traffic, per se, but we do have the traffic impact study, which shows not a major impact from the application, but otherwise, I think that it is in keeping with this section. 10.38-8, the proposal ensures adequate space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment or use. I think the parking and circulation plan as presented does that. 10.38-9, the proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and/or storage for sewage, refuse, recyclables, other wastes. We know the town engineer was happy with the sewer connections, and I believe there were appropriate facilities provided for the other removal of the other wastes mentioned in this section. 10.39-0, the proposal ensures, I believe this is -- is this relevant? Blood hazards?
No, it's not in a FPC zone.
Yeah, not relevant. 10.39-1, proposal protects to the extent feasible, unique, or important natural, historic, or scenic features. I think I would again point to the landscaping approach being taken, which achieves that. 10.39-2, again with landscaping, provides adequate landscaping, including the screening of adjacent residential uses, et cetera. 10.39-3, we just did that. 10.39-4, proposal avoids to the extent feasible impact on steep slopes, slopes, floodplains, scenic views, grade changes in wetlands. We know the Conservation Commission was happy with the proposal. The proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain, to the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity, which have functional or visual relationship thereto. I think we've looked at the proposed height in the context of other buildings in the area and found that it is appropriate. 10.39-6, proposal provides screening for storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, rooftop equipment, utility buildings, and similar features. I believe that it does. 39-7, the proposal provides adequate recreational facilities, open space, and amenities for the proposed use. We don't actually have recreational facilities proposed here, except for the bike racks, but I believe that the project is located close enough to other amenities in town that should satisfy this section. And the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan, which I believe it is, especially in that it's providing new housing at a mix of income levels, which is one of the key goals of the master plan. So that addresses, I think, all the findings for the special permit, so I'd entertain a motion on that. Rob?
I move to close the special permit hearing and grant the special permit as requested with the conditions listed.
And would that include the waivers as requested?
And the parking waiver, yes.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
And so now we'll move on to the site plan review criteria, Section 11.24. Would board members like to go through this in detail as well? The alternative, again, would be a blanket motion, finding that the application is in keeping with these criteria and design guidelines.
I'm okay with the second?
Yeah, I would think a blanket motion would be appropriate.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments on the proposed conditions.
Please.
Number eight, you've got detailed plans of paved areas, detailed information about site improvements, including information related to handicap accessibility, surface treatments.
Do you want to vote on the blanket motion to --
I don't believe it was actually -- I think there was a consensus to make that motion. I don't think I heard a motion in a second.
I was just about to make a motion.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we got the conditions. If it was going to be approved with these conditions.
We could also make this as part of the discussion of the motion.
So Mr. Reedy had some comments on the conditions, which he apparently would like to bring forward at this time before you approve the plan.
Before a motion is made, is --
I suppose so, because when you make the motion, you will say with the waivers and conditions as --
As discussed.
So do you -- so are you thinking that you would like to go through the conditions one by one and talk about them?
That's what he was just asking.
Well, the first question was if we want to go through the criteria in Section 11.24 one by one, and I believe the consensus was no, but now, because there's new comments from the applicant on the conditions, I think that we should go through those. I would suggest that let's first hear which sections the applicant has comments on.
Very simply, it's only Section 8 and Section 31(c), or conditions 8 and 31(c). So 8 talks about some essentially specs that we would have to provide. We believe we've already provided them to you. If we could change the condition, if you'd like some more comfort, shall be submitted to the planning department for review prior to the issuance of the building permit. The way it reads now is submission to the planning board for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit, and I'm just trying to think of the timing of things in that we've provided it, so we could give it to staff, they could look, make sure that it complies with all the regulatory codes, and then allow us to receive the building permit. So that would be my first suggestion. And then I'll skip over to 31(c), so you can maybe talk about all of these. So 31(c) is the final CO shall not be issued until, and the last one is as-built plans have been submitted to the building commissioner and town engineer, and have been approved by the building commissioner and town engineer. And, you know, we were just thinking about by the time those as-bills are actually ready to be done, in the lag time, you're probably talking about a completed building for about three to four weeks before we actually get that CO. So either, you know, a temporary CO will issue, you know, pending final approval of these as-bills, just a kind of a practical timeline matter.
Chris?
Usually, the building commissioner is willing to issue a temporary CO if most things are taken care of, so I think that that would be adequate, but so that means that this condition stays the way it is.
So the building commissioner, I think you're saying, Chris, would take such an action regardless of whether the planning board suggests he do that? That's issuing a temporary CO?
I think he would, yes.
It's always nice to have it in writing.
So I'm not sure what the proposed wording of this is, 31(c)?
Right, because this is not restricting a temporary CO. It's restricting a final.
Right. Even if it's suggestive language, if we can capture it in the minutes and then have the building commissioner take a look at it in the minutes, I think I'm comfortable with, because as a practical matter, I've dealt with, you know, the building commissioner enough to know that's what his MO is.
Steve?
So we don't -- do we normally deal with temporary COs? Because those don't necessarily deal with planning board issues. Those really deal with, you know, construction issues.
We're coming up to, before Rob will issue the CO, he looks at this decision and all the conditions and says, "You've met it or you haven't met it, and if you haven't met it, how practical, like, if you're doing it in December and you can't get the landscaping in, here's a temporary CO until spring." So, but to your point, no, it's not necessarily the --
Yeah, so I think we're sort of dipping into a place where he would typically have more, you know, more authority.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Were those the only two sections they were comments on? So if I could go back to, since it sounds like 31(c) is going to remain as is, 8, the only request is that instead of the planning board, it's the planning department that does the review and approval? Is that okay with staff?
Yes.
Okay. So I had reviewed these conditions previously, and I think they address all the issues outstanding here. Would any board members like to go through these one by one? Or are there any particular sections that anyone would like to comment on? Seeing none, then, I suppose I'd entertain a motion to approve the request for site plan review approval after closing the public hearing, and grant the request with the conditions as written and discussed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so moved, seconded. All right.
Who's seconded?
Ari seconded. So the motion is moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob?
I don't know if we specifically gave a special permit for the height?
I believe we were discussing both the special permits.
As long as that ends up in there. That was, thank you very much. Yeah, that was my understanding.
So what did you say?
When I made the special permit, I meant to include both special permits.
Include both special permits.
Okay, and we did discuss the height in the context of the buildings in the vicinity, so I think that was clear. All right.
Perfect.
Thank you for coming in.
And were you going to vote on the 11.24 criteria as well? Include those in the motion that this project met all the criteria of 11.24?
Mover and seconder, okay with incorporating that? Great, all right, thank you. Okay, so originally, these were the only two items on our agenda. We did add in an item three, which is town meeting issues, so we have impact of charter on zoning amendments. I think several of us have updates, but Rob, why don't you go first?
So I presented the zoning articles at the select board meeting this week.
Yeah, congratulations.
And there was a long --
Can we please keep the conversation outside the room?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, people. Bye, thanks so much.
Thank you.
There was -- they've been engaged -- There was -- they've been engaged in an ongoing discussion about which articles are appropriate for town meeting to consider in lieu of the transition provisions in the new charter. And there's been a memo from the town attorney about recommending that certain articles not be heard by town meeting or not be acted on by town meeting, and then the select board had their own opinions about both the attorney's memo and about articles that should or should not be considered. And so what they eventually decided with regard to zoning, and specifically zoning is -- was, they found, was on the dividing line between yes or no. I mean, zoning issues in general are not always urgent and -- or essential or whatever, and so it's questionable, but it's also some part of the ongoing business of the town, so it's questionable whether they should or should not be allowed. And they ultimately decided that the marijuana articles actually were urgent, and so they will be considered, and that the inclusionary zoning articles are part of a long planning process in the town and are correcting a bylaw that is not working as intended and therefore is a matter of some urgency. So they will allow -- and the attorney's memo indicated that they had certain authority to decide that these questions, and so they will allow those inclusionary zoning articles to be heard by town meeting. They were not convinced that the supplemental dwelling units article rose to that level, and so they are going to inform town meeting that they should not act on Article 33 or on Article 34, which is the petition article to rezone part of Northeast Amherst, because it involves a significant change and hasn't been part of a long planning process. So those two articles, they will inform the moderator, and the moderator has agreed not to hear an affirmative motion on those articles. I believe that we will be able to make some other motion on those articles, for instance, to refer them or defeat them or something.
So would you repeat that?
I believe that the moderator will accept a different motion on those articles to refer or defeat or dismiss, or I guess to refer or dismiss, so.
I've been told that for those articles, which the select board has not deemed essential or necessary, the moderator will only allow a dismiss or refer motion on the article. Steve?
So what could go wrong? But so what happens if the -- what happens if the motion to dismiss or the motion to refer don't pass? So can you have an open?
Well, it hasn't been moved. No one would have moved in terms of the article, right?
In order to defeat or to refer, you'd have to have an actual motion, right? So what, let's say you have a motion to dismiss.
Oh, I see.
And it doesn't pass, so it's still live.
But you can't have a motion to dismiss until you have a motion.
No, that can be the motion, that can be the primary motion.
Well, what is it that you're dismissing if you don't have an article on the floor?
You can move to dismiss.
So when the article is on the warrant, it has to be acted on in some way.
Yeah.
And so one of the ways you can act on it is to dismiss it. That could be the main motion.
Okay.
If the motion to dismiss fails, then somebody will make another motion to refer, for instance. Now that also fails, I don't know.
So I think part of this, and I'd say that we're now discussing all three of these items, because I think they interplay, the impact, the motions, and the presentations, so.
All three? All three of which items?
Oh, sorry, 3A through C.
Oh, yeah.
On our agenda.
Oh, great, okay, I thought you were talking about three zoning amendments.
Oh, no, I didn't read different articles, nope. So it seems like we should be prepared for a lot of different outcomes here, because the process is evolving so quickly, so I would suggest that we, you know, have preparations to present the articles as if they were actually going ahead, but have alternative motions in case it does come to pass that the moderator only entertains a refer or dismiss, and so we would need to decide what we would like to do with Article 33, supplemental dwellings. That's the only one that we'd be responsible for the motion for, and I would suggest that we move to refer it back to ourselves.
Can we agree with that? I would disagree with that. I don't think we should be in a position of, at this point, referring back to ourselves an article that we have pretty carefully vetted among ourselves. If the moderator won't accept a motion in terms of the article, I don't think we should be moving to dismiss or refer. I think maybe somebody else can do that if they want to, but I'm certainly not comfortable doing that.
That's interesting.
I don't think the moderator will accept a motion in terms of the article.
We could also alternatively refer it to the town council.
That's true. I mean, yeah, that's actually -- can we do that? Can it -- will the article still be live?
Well, we do only have one government at a time.
Yeah, to a future town council, yeah.
So that is a good statement to start a conversation, because the way the moderator has been explaining it to me is that we are no longer in the former type of government. Now that we have the charter vote, we are now in the charter realm, and we are in the transition period of the charter, and so things have changed. Town meeting doesn't have the same powers or responsibilities as it used to have, and the select board doesn't have the same powers and responsibilities, so that we have to act with that knowledge in place, that we're in this transition zone, but we are actually under the umbrella of the charter.
Steve?
So the weird thing is that if we move in terms of an article and it's not passed, then it's defeated, so.
But we don't anticipate.
If you move to defeat an article and that's not passed, that doesn't mean it's passed.
Well, there's no motion to defeat.
Dismiss. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean.
Chris?
If it's dismissed, it can't come back for two years, I believe.
Unless the planning board brings it back.
Unless the planning board recommends it, yeah. So in my mind, the most generous and flexible thing would be to move to refer it to the planning board, and then the planning board can take it up in January when there's a town council and move forward with it at that time.
Can we move to withdraw or move to table?
Yeah, can we just not address the issue?
I think you could just not make a motion, yeah. We could just not make a motion, and if moderator hears no motion, then he'll consider it dismissed, I think.
That might be the best way to go.
We move to make no motion.
Well, not -- zip.
That's actually really interesting.
So could I suggest that we plan that as our primary approach, to not move the article, and if there's some sort of logistical problem with that, that we refer it to ourselves?
Would somebody be prepared to be able to explain that tactic? Because if there's going to be an article, there's going to be some discussion, and there's going to be a presentation by the town attorney, just to be clear about who, about why this article shouldn't be acted upon, or why town meeting shouldn't have authority to act on it.
Well, we can't talk about the motion until it's a motion.
Right.
And if it's never moved, then town meeting can't talk about it.
I think that what's going to happen most likely is the town attorney will give an introductory statement at the beginning of the session, explaining what's going to happen with each of the articles that the select board hasn't endorsed as essential or necessary, rather than to each of them, would be my guess. Christine?
Just our articles are in the 30s, aren't there other? Won't this happen before it gets to us?
The conversation about, yeah.
This type of --
That would happen, I think, at the very outset, yeah.
Are there other, I'm sorry.
Steve?
Are there other articles that are being recommended of the gun, the gun?
They're later on the warrant, though, I believe.
37.
So ours, actually, 33 may be the first.
Is it?
For this, this will be the case.
Yeah, I think that's right. 33, 34, and 37 are the --
So when we get to Article 33 in the warrant, the town attorney will then, before the article is moved, the town attorney will make a statement about not being able to consider that article.
Chris?
Is that correct? I believe the town attorney is going to make a general statement at the beginning of town meeting, and that we, certainly if you want him to be there at each night of town meeting when zoning articles are discussed, you can make that request, but I didn't think that was particularly necessary if he made a general statement in the beginning of town meeting about which articles should be allowed to go forward and which articles should not be allowed to go forward.
Rob?
I think we can just tell the moderator, we're not planning to make a motion, and he can just say.
Right.
Working out casually, I mean, not casually, but officially with the moderator and bypass the rest of the system.
Yeah.
Right. And if there's a problem with that, we have the fallback plan of referring it to ourselves, but the primary approach is to simply not make a motion. So it does also raise the question of whether, in the case of this article, we want to make the presentation or simply say we're not going to, we have the opportunity to, I would think, although that would only come up if there's a motion.
Yeah.
So if there's no motion, there's no presentation. If there's a motion to refer, for whatever reason, we would have the opportunity to make a presentation. Should we? Do we want to?
I think if the motion cannot be acted upon, I see no reason to make a presentation about it.
Okay, so we'll do that. Maria?
I have a question about later on, maybe we don't know yet, but how do we bring this back to table as far as a discussion point and try to push it?
Well, you know, technically, our next opportunity would be the next town meeting in the fall, but we'd encounter, I think, the same issue, and we've already talked, and the zoning subcommittee has already talked about not bringing zoning articles to the fall town meeting, so I think the next opportunity would be as soon as the new council takes office.
Is there even likely to be a fall town meeting?
Exactly. I don't think there will be a fall town meeting.
There will be a fall town meeting, because there's always paying bills that came in late, that there's always that article.
Steve?
But in that same principle, that it only has to be things that are essential, this would deem to be not essential in the fall?
Yeah, I think once we don't present it to town meeting, then it's still on our table, and we can do whatever we want to with it at that point relative to the new council.
I'd agree. Okay, so we are in consensus about how we're going to proceed with this?
So I will email the town moderator tomorrow and tell him that you are choosing not to make a motion, but if that is not appropriate, then your motion would be to refer to yourselves. Is that correct?
Yes. And then otherwise, on motions and presentations, I don't think other articles are impacted by this, oh, with the exception that the select board has also determined that 34 cannot be moved on, so we would likely not need to make a presentation on that either. And the marijuana articles and inclusionary zoning will proceed as planned with the same movers and speakers.
Which one is 34?
34 is the citizen petition to rezone.
Oh, North Amherst, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other issues on town meeting? Chris?
There was one other issue which came up during motion review on Monday morning. The town moderator and the town attorney both felt that the motion on the planning board's inclusionary zoning article, which is Article 35, should reflect the words that Mr. Weiss was going to use for his article, because it mentions the fact that there's kind of a lack of wording in our current bylaw when it refers to 21 units need 12% or more affordable units. It doesn't say 21 or more units, it just says 21 units. So Rob and I had discussed this earlier, and the moderator feels that it would be in scope and very worthwhile to put those words in. So if you all agree, then I will submit those words to Deborah Pupple. The other thing that Jerry Weiss included in his motion was to insert a colon after the word special permit modifying dimensions triggering this bylaw, and then there was a list of the special permit modifications, so if you wouldn't mind putting the colon in as well? Is that appropriate?
Yes.
All right, so the colon and the words or more will go into the motion. And I think Mr. Burt Whistle was going to make that motion, is that right?
Yes, I'm going to move it.
Yeah.
Somebody else is speaking to it, although I don't remember who.
So those changes will be reflected on the motion sheet?
Yes.
Great. We also have the issue of the warrant discussions. We had an email circulating about which planning board members would attend. I attended last night. I believe there's one on Thursday, Saturday?
I said I would go Thursday.
Thursday, okay. And then is it Friday and Saturday?
No.
Or just Saturday?
Saturday.
Rob's going to Saturday? Okay, so those are covered. Okay. We don't technically have this on our agenda, but our next meeting will be?
Next week?
Next week.
May 2nd at 5:00.
Five weeks in a row.
Did we go with 5 o'clock for that one?
5 o'clock, yeah.
5 o'clock?
That's a town meeting at 5:00.
So if we do five meetings in a row, do we get, I mean, the newbie here, like dispensation later in the year, it's like?
It's time and a half.
Let's play hooky.
Did you read the backside of your appointment letter?
During the summer, you usually meet less frequently, if that's any consolation to you. Like once a month, sometimes?
That sounds about right.
It's July, once in August, usually.
I won't be able to be here on May 16th, just like to note that.
So this brings up another, sorry, I'm speaking.
Might be when inclusionary zoning is heard.
On May 16th?
Possible, yeah.
I think it'll be well before that.
Oh, you think so?
Yeah, if it, I'll make accommodations if it comes up on the 16th, but that would be, do we have Thursdays allocated to town meeting as options again this time? It's been Monday, Wednesday with optional Thursdays.
Same experience, probably both will not have Thursdays.
Right, so if it was the 16th, that would be the sixth session?
Sometimes it goes eight sessions in the spring.
Yeah, but we're going to dismiss a bunch, so it's --
This is going to be a unique town meeting.
Chris?
It is a unique town meeting, no doubt about that.
During the motion review, people always throw in their ideas of how long it's going to take, and people were everywhere on the planet, but from 6 to, I think, 9 or 11 was the high one.
I think it was 8.
Probably 9 was the high one.
You should have a pool, office pool.
Yeah. There's no prize, but I wanted to bring up one more thing, which is that the town manager has requested that all important boards and committees, like the planning board and the select board, post a meeting prior to town meeting for every night of town meeting, and Mr. McCarthy has done a great job of finding rooms for you every night of town meeting, so the time slot would be 6 to 6:30 on that night, in case anything comes up having to do with town meeting that you need to discuss. The other thing that he's done with the select board is to state that that meeting, whatever it is, whatever night it is, actually extends through the time of town meeting, and that the purpose of that is in case that particular board needs to go off in a room and discuss something, and then come back to town meeting and make a statement. So I don't know if you want to do that, so I'll do the same thing then.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Anything else on town meeting?
I don't think so.
Item is not anticipated? Okay, I think we'll be adjourned then. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.